Few more and be more.
Thank you. Jason, would you like to do introductions of the team, please?
Good evening, everyone. We've got not a full complement of leadership team members here. We've got a couple of people out, but we've got our executive assistant Tammy Jeffries here, to my left, and to my right, deputy director, chief financial and operating officer, Dan Baer, and then we've got deputy director of public services, Shannon Peterson. We've got the director of strategy and communications, Jeannie Allen, and executive director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle. Absent today are Lucretia Robertson, director of HR and diversity, equity, and inclusion. She's out, and as well as Mike Rose, director of facilities and information technology. Welcome, everyone.
Great, thank you. Any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move along to public comment. We have no public comment to incorporate this evening, so we're going to move right along to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If there is a separate discussion desired on any of the agenda items, items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Are there any requests to remove something from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thanks, Eric.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, great. That leads us to presentations, reports, and briefings, starting with board member presentations. Is there somebody who would like to lead off?
I don't have any report. Sure, so last, yeah, it was last week, last week, I was able to join Stephanie in the kickoff for the Port Orchard feasibility task force. It was a first meeting, but very energetic, enthusiastic, and inspiring. It was a great group of people to be with, so really enjoyed being there. Also, last Sunday, I joined the Bainbridge Public Library for the BPL donor appreciation party, really great turnout. It's the first donor appreciation party that they've had since COVID. There were probably a couple of hundred people there, something like that. So really enjoyed that space, really enjoyed seeing, you know, community come together and chip in for what's a really beautiful library. And third, very exciting email that I got earlier today or yesterday, the, an email to volunteer for the Manchester Salmon Bank on Father's Day. So really excited for that one. That's good. I volunteered for the first time last year. I very much enjoyed it, so.
That's a classic event. And, and a nice gesture from the north to the south, Eric.
We can get them.
In the crossover, yeah. As Eric said, I was part of the feasibility study too, which was very interesting and very exciting to see others come together in that conversation. I was also able to join Wendy and the rest of the foundation team, as, as well as Jason, at a Friends of Library event in Silverdale honoring some of their, they didn't call them old, not their old members, they're very esteemed, longtime members. So that, that was fun to see that honoring. And, and then Gina, Jeannie, I was, I didn't want to feel guilty about coming here today without having made a romp through the new library website, so I spent some time going through that last night pretty late. And, and it's beautiful. And I really tried to find things that I could say, gosh, I haven't thought about that, and I couldn't, so. It was, but it was fun to go through, so. I hope others got a chance to kind of work through and can provide that feedback around the new website. With that, how about a report from the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee?
I'll take that. Thank you, Stephanie. So I met with Jason and Jeannie and Dan, and we talked about the transition of the website and how some of the ongoing work is surrounding managing patron accounts and the frequently asked questions, and seeking to migrate the catalog from a desktop to a web-based version for the launch on May 3rd. So that's continuing to keep Jeannie and her staff busy. We've been working with a training specialist to do some in-house planning and continue on with monthly trainings, and some of the issues have been the defense of the collection challenges and harassment training for the staff and making sure that they're safe and they get issues up to upper management right away if they're in a harassment situation. And we're looking at the expanding the library book lockers at Olalla and Sebeck, and we'll consider Hansville too soon. And as far as the strategy, strategic plan update, the leadership team has been really working on the values and the mission and the vision in the strategic planning process, so that's been consuming a lot of their time. And then, as a board, we can expect to hear more and maybe have action to consider about the new library for the city of Port Orchard at our July meeting. So that's some of the things that we were talking about in our strategic planning session. Thank you.
Any questions for Gina? Great. Dan Baer, financial report.
Well, we have another boring financial report for March, I'm happy to report.
That's our goal.
So I really don't have anything else to say on it. We're on target with revenues and expenditures, and there are many footnotes in there for explanations, but I'll take questions if anyone would like to propose any.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Got to love a good footnote, Dan. Jason, library director's report.
Good evening. So the highlights of my month of March were getting out to downtown Bremerton to put on my public services hat for the day. Phenomenal visit. My goal is to work in every branch location by the end of the year, and the reasons for doing that really are twofold. You know, we've been, I've talked about last month, this series of trainings designed around empathy that we've been doing as a leadership team, and so really wanting to put more meat behind that, you know, instead of saying that and having lip service to that, it's about actions. And so I think, for me, what's really important is to ground myself in the actual work that's happening by experiencing it firsthand. And obviously, you know, those little slices in time won't inform, you know, strategy as an organization, but that coupled with all the reports we get. For instance, we get incident reports, we see comment cards from patrons, we have our director reports, and we have our managers supervisors meeting, so we get a glimpse of what's happening, but it's important to have a total picture. So me getting out to the branches, it also keeps me in touch with staff. And so it was a great day. I got a chance to check out books from patrons. Yeah, we had a little bit of everything that day. I had a patron checking in about 50 books, and she checked out another, I don't know, 30 or 40. She had about 100 out on her card, and so I put books on hold, I checked the book drop, handled a patron who was, you know, violating the patron code of conduct. So I got a pretty much, almost a full glimpse of what would happen in the day of a life of a downtown Bremerton staff member. So I think it was a really good day. And so, as I said, I plan to get around to all locations. And, you know, I did that last year when I went out with the mobile services unit and did two runs with that unit, so it's, it'll be important for me to just keep in touch with staff that way. And so it helps me to understand their challenges and successes more, and helps, you know, again, inform our strategy in a way that is entirely different than sitting in my office and having leadership team meetings with this fantastic group. So I'm looking forward to doing that, and Tammy scheduling those. In terms of human resources, it's continuing to be really, really busy. As Gina stated out of our strategic alarm range planning meeting, we've got regular rotations of trainings happening now, which is great. That's the goal for the organization. And so, in building a complete staff and organizational training department. And so we have an internal person now who's serving as our training specialist, and so really focusing on defending library materials. You know, as you know, there have been trends towards more challenges of both public library and school library materials, so it's really important for us as an organization to have, for us, understand first of all, how these challenges happen and put us in a good position to be able to, you know, not necessarily defend the challenges from the staff standpoint in our locations that are dealing with them, you know, frontline, but be able to pass those to us, and we have a, you know, consistent, strong policy to be able to deal with some of the challenges that might in fact come our way. And then the other piece really is, is the harassment training. So we've done a couple throughout the year, and so it's important to get the organization, and part of building culture at Kitsap Regional Library, obviously harassment will not be tolerated in any form, so having the bystander intervention trainings that are, we're compelling everyone to do, even leadership, has been important. And so no organization obviously should tolerate any form of harassment, but it's important to have people acknowledge that they've taken that, so that if things like that happen, you know, we'll be prepared to deal with it. But first, we need everybody trained and have the, the proper information. And so the other part of training in March was really a plethora of trainings around handling our new website. And so there are a lot of facets of the new website, from putting in events, to dealing with interlibrary loan, to managing, you know, all of the cards that are on that site. It takes a lot of, not only management from the communications team, but also from our branch team to be able to manage that, so. And then the biggest piece of it is just how to deal with patron accounts. So we've had a bunch of trainings that have been geared towards staff for the entire month to support them, and supporting the website, and supporting patrons in navigating that. And foundation stuff, strong first quarter with our foundation partners, over $70,000 rage raised, and we're growing our sponsorship base in 2023, which is part of our fundraising goals. Wendy, you want to add any, any more meat to that?
Yeah, I would add just in addition to engaging our community in sponsorship, also looking at growing grant funding as well, so that's been something that we've definitely been needing to, you know, really try to explore all of the options for grant funding as well, and making sure that if there's any supply that are fit, any fulfill words of the library is doing that we're taking advantage of those opportunities and putting in from those requests. And of course, we continue to be focused on acquisition, and we're really continuing to see great results there. So slow and steady growth, I feel like, is what we're seeking.
Thank you. And last but not least, I just want to wish all of our library workers a happy library workers' day. So today is library workers' day. We've got, you know, amazing staff through and through our organization, so I want to publicly acknowledge that. We send kudos to all of our staff for all the hard work that they do, both, you know, on the front lines and behind the scenes. We wouldn't be the library system we are without those staff. So fortunately, our foundation team was able to get out and drop some cookies off today, and that was great. And so just really want to acknowledge all of their hard work and all of their patience in dealing with everything that comes their way, from, you know, administrative stuff to patron stuff to just daily life challenges. Our team is the best here at Kitsap, so happy library workers' day to them and to my fabulous leadership team. You don't go unnoticed. And that's all. That's all I have for you this month. Any questions?
Thank you, Jason. I, I made, with it being National Libraries Week, I pulled a little poem, but it strikes me, you know, that the things we read, and whether it's poetry or, or whatever that honors our staff or the role of libraries in the life, nothing really gets to the, the reality of today's librarian when you, when you speak to bystander training and, and really all of the other things that they're called to do in the day-to-day work that, for the most part, people don't realize, because so often we romanticize the role. And so we're very proud of the staff of the library, and I think increasingly acknowledging that this really is the frontline of the community in so many, in so many ways, and just want to say, acknowledge their work as, as well. But it did strike me that no, any poem would just seem too trite in the moment, given really what they're doing day-to-day, so. Thanks for that acknowledgement. The, the next thing we're, on the agenda is really a piece of new business, and, and honestly, we mentioned this work a couple of months ago, that we were going to dive into it, and certainly we've been prompted by our community also encouraging us to do it as well around updating our, both, really our access, right, our access to the board, to the, the board and, and public comment. And a little bit of context is, you know, prior to the pandemic, and really prior to any one of the five of us sitting here today, the, you know, the tradition of the Board of Trustees was to rotate from one library location to the next and to be 100% in-person, and to which if our public chose to show up, they could, but in fact, I don't know that they often did. And then COVID happened and threw us entirely into a virtual environment. And so since 2020, and particularly, we've kind of been dealing with real-time adjustments to thinking about our access or thinking about updates to the public comment. And it really is time, because I think the thing that we can certainly say is for the foreseeable future, you know, we're going to be in a hybrid model, which also means then we have to think about this in the context of what can we deliver consistently for technology to really handle the hybrid model, not just that we stream out, but eventually that we can also take engagement across that platform as well, which we're not really currently doing, except through kind of clunky ways if people choose to send in writing. So that's the, the context. And then it struck me as we were looking at, and really was provided to the trustees when you look at, I don't know, Tammy and Jason rounded up, I don't know what was in that packet, but 12 or 15 samples of either updated current public comment guidelines from libraries, but also other public entities in the county. And as I, as we were looking to them, we certainly have opportunity. And even as I started out, because I sent a letter to my colleagues, kind of queuing this conversation up, you know, I was thinking, oh, well, we'll have a conversation tonight, and we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit, and that will inform a draft that we can bring back next month, and then, you know, we can look at that and the public can comment on that too. And then, you know, we'll tidy this up and be done by the month after that. And it really struck me when I happened to reach out to Lucretia and said, well, what might we need to be considering in the context of the fact of the library's strategic planning and all the work that's being done with revised mission and values and the concept of belonging, and how does that filter? So I asked Lucretia, I've got a really long memo, I've got a really long email back, and it just struck me that tonight is going to be the beginning of that conversation, and I think alls we're really going to do is, one, we, we know, I mean, we know that we need to clarify really the distinct, right now, we talk about correspondence, and then we talk about written comments, I'm not really sure how those two things are different, but we need to think about that. We don't really speak with great clarity about how people who are in need, who have special disabilities and are in need of some special support for access, we're kind of silent on that matter. How can we incorporate truly, in an authentic way, relevant KRL values? And, and then how can we optimize guidelines that allow us to both manage this balance, that at the end of the day, this is a board meeting to which the public is a part of, but our functional and foundational role is to really invite that engagement and discourse in. So we're going to have to figure out how to keep that all in balance. So long story short, there's going to be no clean policy in the next month or two, probably, because I think this is an opportune time to, to really wade into this work and invite the engagement of the staff to be a part of it, invite the engagement of our community to be a part of it. So I just wanted to open it up, because so rarely, a lot of times our agenda items are super full, and they're not tonight. And so the request to my colleagues on the board is just really tonight to, to offer their own comments about your, your thoughts about what we're about to do, and what are you thinking, and how we might begin to, to move forward to create a broader policy around access that includes updated public comment guidelines. So I'm seeking volunteers to go first.
I think the first thing we need to do, and the first, I think what kind of brought this on was someone who wanted to come in virtually, and I think we should, can we get going on that fairly soon? And not just via Zoom, but maybe even via telephone. Some people may not have a cell phone even, and maybe they still want to join. So I don't know, I think that's something maybe we could work on and do that fairly soon.
If we're going to continue to have our meetings here, city council has their meetings every other Wednesday, and they are able to take public comment remotely through Zoom, and BCAD is supporting both of those, both of these platforms. So I think that should be pretty easy to do. One of the things that I would like to see is, even with city council, with KRL, there's not a lot of public comment, unfortunately. So are there some unique things that we can do to solicit and facilitate communication with the, with the community and bring that in that's different than just maybe a phone or Zoom or just this, this particular time? Everyone can't be here at 5:30 the fourth Tuesday of the month, and so it can be very difficult, and they miss out on that opportunity. So just really kind of thinking outside of the box and saying, okay, how can we hear from the community and be interactive in that way?
Well, I guess I appreciate the, the resources that the staff pulled together, and I haven't had the opportunity to wade through those and look at the different models or templates that we have available to us, but I am curious about it. I know, I just heard about another public board, which is a little more subject to controversy, and that was the North Kitsap School District, and how they, the perception in the community is how difficult it is to give public comment. And I want to, I appreciate your comments about respecting the balance of our role, yet being trained in how we handle difficult situations if we're faced with one from the comment, and always making sure that whatever structure we use, that there is meaningful opportunity for public comment. I think that's a priority for us to keep in mind, so. Those are my only thoughts I have for now until we, till I personally have an opportunity to dig in the materials more and look at other examples. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. I, I appreciate the examples that, that we saw. There was a lot that we and a lot of other organizations learned during COVID about, you know, openness and transparency while still sheltered in place, and making sure that, you know, patrons, citizens could, could continue delivering their, their feedback and participate. And, you know, we learned a lot along the way. From, from what I saw, I didn't necessarily see anything in comparing ourselves to, whether it was other libraries or municipalities, that said that we were further back than they are, especially considering the resources that we have. Maybe some organizations were larger, had more resources. I didn't see that they, we were further behind, but I also know that this is an organization that's not afraid to lead. So I think overall, right now, from what we've learned and what we have available to us, we're, we're in a great spot. We got a lot more public comment earlier last year before you joined Mar One, and a lot of it was actually about the ability to join meetings remotely, the ability to watch meetings if they weren't able to attend live, and the ability to, you know, submit public comment, and the ability to, to participate more. So I think we did get some feedback there, but I don't think we were necessarily in a rare space, because I think a lot of organizations were figuring that out. And, you know, we, we were figuring it out along the way as well. It wasn't like we were trying to, you know, hide anything. We were doing our best with the resources that we had available to make, to be as transparent as possible. So I think that, I think that that's great, and I think that a lot of a successful meeting with public comment comes from, comes from two things. But I think ultimately, it comes from a culture of trust and collaboration, and having a space where, you know, it, there can be discussion and discourse before it gets to public comment, like being able to ask a question as a citizen that drives an agenda item coming up, that's just a, you know, you haven't talked about this in a while, I'd love to learn more. Okay, no problem. We can turn it into an agenda item and, and bring some, some meaningful research and bring some, some, some staff behind it, as opposed to, you know, public comment where I've been on, not in this area, but local commissions, where there are, are folks who show up every week and they're very upset, right? And, and, you know, they feel that, you know, that an organization's trying to hide something which we're not. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of, of trust that needs to be built up, and this is a collaborative environment as well. I think an important part of developing a, a method of, of public comment and communication that works for everybody is to listen to everybody first and understand what they need, because we, and to be, and to be able, for us as an organization, to remove assumptions, like, we can't assume that everybody who wants to participate that has kids has daycare where they can come and, and spend a couple of hours here. We can't expect that everybody has transportation. We can't expect that everybody works nine to five. There are, there are staff members who want to be able to attend these. So I think kind of removing, you know, kind of removing our assumptions and, and asking what's needed. I think, you know, being able to lead in a way that maybe isn't not the most technologically advanced, but being able to lead in a way that we serve our community as they've requested and as they need us. So I think it's, I think it's a bit of a, a collaborative effort there. It's, it's, it's not just kind of top-down. So encouraging, reaching out ahead of time and proposing agenda items, I think, could, could go a long way in kind of building that trust and collaboration. And, yeah, Lucretia, Lucretia is out this week, but I do think it's important, you know, in, in her absence, to make sure that we look through this, this, this process and communication as a, through the DEI lens, if these are, you know, values that we are going to commit to as an organization, let's make sure that these values reflect the communication that we want to receive from the public, ensuring, you know, that, that what we're bringing to the table does not negatively impact those who are most impacted. And that includes, you know, you know, removing barriers to making or receiving public comment where, you know, where appropriate, or, as I'd mentioned prior to public comment, creating a space for welcoming dialogue and collaboration, and, and working to build trust, which goes beyond, you know, once a month, public comment. So I think this is all ongoing and, and open to discussion and evolution, but, and of course, as long as the interaction remains civil and respectful and on topic, all of those things are important. But I think, you know, developing that, that culture of trust and collaboration is a big part of making sure that we're serving the public in, in the way that is most appropriate for the county.
Any thoughts, Mar One?
So in, in response, my, my, my query would be, are there any metrics on what it was like last year when folks were saying they wanted more accessibility, they wanted the Zoom, so they, they can participate, and looking at, what do the numbers look like now in comparison? Are folks watching live at the same rate? Is it increasing? Is it decreasing? Are they watching it later on? I think those things would be interesting to take a look.
It's pretty good. That's, we can't talk over, yell over each other. That's, I mean, that's a great question. I think that's the thing about public comments. I think, I think historically, not within this organization, but I think when I've seen, you know, when I've watched city council meetings, for example, a lot of public comment comes from a place where it's like the last resort, right? Because they either feel unheard, or they don't feel that they're in a place where they can bring things up and other avenues. that they're in a place where they can bring things up and other avenues, or maybe they've tried working with staff and they haven't. So I don't have any metrics. I don't know if some of those folks necessarily feel that things have gotten better, but I think that a lot of public comment just historically has been, you know, tends to come from a negative place, a, a place where people are fed up and this is like, this is the last resort. So I haven't heard of, you know, any sort of continued frustration. I know that we've done a lot to address the things that came up early last year, and I don't know of anything that's still outstanding, but I know that we put a lot of, of work into making sure that, you know, those types of concerns were addressed and we were serving the public in the same way that everybody else was at the time.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that we're here was definitely a step in that direction. The, the current request is that people can engage with us while we're here remotely. And we have that capability and it's time to fold that in. I would agree with you, Eric. I think sometimes when people come to the board, it comes at a time when they, they really want to be heard because they care deeply about something. Because I really think the library does a, a good job inviting input and co, and comment along the way. So, so I don't know, Jeanne, do you want to speak to your experience just generally about, we have a lot of avenues for, for taking in input from the community and some of them are directly through the staff and then some of them through the board as well. So do you want to speak just in general?
I would say in general, we've tried to create a lot of avenues in respect of all of the different ways that people prefer to give comments. So we do have the ability for people to approach staff. Oftentimes, those conversations are filtered directly up to our leadership team. We take all of those comments very seriously. There's comment cards. Oftentimes, if there's something important that's being shared, a staff person will have that conversation and then follow it up with a comment card directly to the patron and those are brought directly to our leadership team. We try to survey the community at least once a year and we try to do that in different ways so that if we're not capturing voices in one way, that there's other avenues as well. We even try to make sure that those surveys are reaching outside of our, our standard patron base because we do serve the entire community and want to hear from those people that aren't always in our branches. So hopefully, the lack of public comment is also a reflection of the fact that we are listening, we are responding, and we are trying to capture what our community feels that we need to be doing as a library and responding in a way that we're, we're doing the right thing and, and they don't need to show up at a meeting frustrated. But I think there's lots of other ways that people could be interacting with leadership and the board here in these meetings.
I think that's also, I mean, my desire in doing this, too, is making sure that we're being holistic. So I think making a note of, you know, right now, we're talking about a very narrow piece of work, right? What are the guidelines around public comment at a, at a regular meeting of the board? And I think part of what we want to incorporate in this is to put that in broader context, right? Which is all of the ways we can invite feedback, you know, from the community to make sure that that's kind of encompassed in whatever we create. I, I think also, we've discussed, the reality is, is we all came on post-COVID. We don't all know one another. We're ordinary, normal citizens, not deeply versed in the business of libraries, per se. So we're literally learning as we go, right? So some of it's about our own education and, and, and even inviting discussion between us because we're getting to know one another and, and how do you, how do you optimize that? And so I, I hope as we go forward that the updated guidelines for public comment is really in a larger scope that's really about access, right? And, and moreover, that we've talked about other ways as well, that you're going to be at the salmon bag, right? That, that it's not just about people being able to interact with us here, although that's very important if they want to be heard on a specific issue that's coming before the board. But it's also about where else are we, right? Are we out in the community? And that, that's part of it, too, I think. So those are the kinds of things we're thinking about. And this is a piece of work that I think we're ready to dive into and will do. But we probably won't have an end product by next month. So, and, and really, this is an invitation, this is an invitation to the community and anybody who's joining us tonight remotely, we, you know, we can't see that at the moment. So, but also the staff, you know, to, to weigh in about when we, when we think about engagement and we think about inviting, the inviting in of our community and we think about that in the context of redefining the, our values with a new strategic plan in terms of what does belonging look like in a, in a public library? What does that mean for this moment, too? So we, we just want to make sure that we're thoughtful and we're authentic as we move forward. So, I don't know.
So two final thoughts. One, I would love to see some of the public comments be positive. At City Council, there are, there are folks that come in for general business and they just talk about something that happened great in their community. So in one of the nine libraries or the mobile library, where they can, you know, share that information. Another thought was, could we tell some of those stories where a librarian or a staff member resolved a patron's issue? So yes, it was resolved in-house, but by sharing that out through public comment here, I think that would be very beneficial for other patrons that maybe don't feel empowered to add, you know, ask those questions. And it's like, oh, hey, you know, they are actually addressing other people's issues and I feel a little bit more empowered to ask those questions and get those answers resolved. And if there's also the good stuff in there, then I can come in and say, hey, you know, Priya was awesome. You know, this person, you know, really did this for me. This, this library really means this much to me and this is how it impacts me and the community. So I think those would be things to, for consideration.
I just want to jump in on that, Marwan. I'm thinking back years and years ago to a summer learning presentation that we, we had where we actually invited patrons from the community instead of like a formal report to talk about summer learning and the impact. And it was just the most joyful thing to hear that directly from the community, everyone from, you know, a four-year-old who went through the program to, you know, someone learning a second language for travel and retirement, that kind of thing. So I also, I'm adding an "and," sorry. But I wonder about the place of our presentations. It's wonderful to bring staff in front of you, but also is there opportunity to invite community voice via that mechanism as well?
Great comments. And, and really, the intent of this conversation tonight is that it's the beginning of a conversation as we, as we move forward. I think we've gotten some, some good ideas to kind of move forward with and we'll look forward to continue to work on this over the course of the next two to three months, for sure. But, good. Thank you. Closing?
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. I appreciate the thoughtfulness around accessibility. I think it's important for our library to be as accessible as possible, especially when we preach diversity, equity, inclusion. And I think in terms of accessibility for our staff, our public are twofold. It's our staff who's our public and it's the general public that we serve. And so I think part of why you haven't seen or there's been a dearth of public comments, I surmise it's been because we have been available, at least from a staff perspective, we've tried to make our sales available to receive information from staff that we can act on. And I think probably, Marwan, and you missed this prior to your time being aboard, I think when we tailed off, when I first got here, we were still getting quite a few public comments. I think maybe the last couple we got were just positive comments on, thank you for, you know, resolving or looking into the matters that we presented. But also, I think you probably see a dearth of actual public commenting is because there are various vehicles in which they can comment. We talked about earlier, the comment cards are a big part of how patrons do that when they're in, in locations. They're able to talk about things. And then our staff who are, are taking those comment cards typically before they even get to my desk, they're responding in real time or directly thereafter because we have them put notes on the cards. Or so if it's, you know, someone was upset because they couldn't reach a shelf and mobility-wise, it was, you know, out of their reach, you know, we'd get a comment from a staff member that, hey, I emailed that patron and I think that's a good idea. We've adjusted the shelving so that now they can reach it. So a lot of those situations are resolved before they even, I think, get to a place of being at a board meeting. And so I think what's important is that, you mentioned on it earlier, people typically show up and give public comments when they feel like they aren't heard, whether it's our, you know, work public or our public public, is that things have gotten such to a point that they feel like people aren't listening and aren't addressing them, that this is a form in which they want to do it. And so I think part of our evolution as a leadership team, and, and not that leadership before or previous iterations of leadership at KRL didn't do it. I think a lot of it was just symptomatic of what was happening at that particular time, just with society. I think we were going through lots of changes with COVID. There were just a lot of stressors that I think, you know, led up to lots of public comments, going through contract negotiations, all of it's just sort of built to a, to a head. But to a point, I think also, we have, there are other vehicles, too. On our website, all of our information is public. So anybody can reach out to us. We've often gotten, you know, emails from patrons that we've addressed, that I've addressed personally. I've called patrons back. And so we try to, in real time, answer questions. We may not be able to resolve them in terms of, you know, it's the resolution that a patron wants, but just being here to listen to them and be able to respond to them is really important. And I think our entire leadership team has been good and very conscientious about doing that and making sure we're on the same page. Hey, did you see that comment? Who's responded to it? Let's get back to that patron. And or staff member, because oftentimes, we have processes in our organization where people can bring issues to us. And departmentally, we're able to try to resolve those. And then the last thing is just about, yes, I think two ways people get to have comments heard here now. And so that's changed as our format has changed. So there's, you know, obviously correspondence in which someone's going to write a letter. And then we're listening to that now because we have the ability to physically be here now that we've dropped most of the, you know, COVID sanctions in terms of gathering in public places. And so the other part of it, though, though, is people who work and/or who have mobility issues, who'd like to make a comment live to our, to us, need an ability to do that. And we have to account for technology. I know I'm saying the same thing you've said before, but I think it's important to be, I think I like the approach that the Board of Trustees has taken to try to balance it all by looking at all of the other methods that people do them. Because when we incorporate that, we want to be able to catch the most users or people who would be giving public comments that we can. I mean, we could rush and do anything we want to do here, but it's important to wave, to kind of weigh these things out, to carefully think and thoughtfully think about how we can do it so we can do the best possible service for our community. And that ultimately is a good reflection of what a library is. A library does a service to its community and tries to be able to, you know, we can't be everything for everybody, but we can certainly try to be. And we put our best foot forward to try to do that. And so I like that this process is kind of, kind of happening organically with the talk and then moving towards, you know, and then actually doing a reviewing and now moving towards actually getting a policy on paper and then making it happen. So I definitely appreciate the commentary. That's it.
My question is, what are the next steps for the board? How do we keep this, is it going to be, how do we keep it on the agenda? Is it going to be old business when we build on time or?
Yeah. Well, so the, I think the next step would be to try to, I don't know if we can get to kind of a draft, a complete draft, updated policy by next month, per se. But I was able to go through the very large packet of examples.
Sorry.
And, no, it was, actually it was great because a lot of it was really the same. And then there was a, there was a gem in there. You're like, oh, man, they're the only ones kind of doing this and it's kind of a cool thing. And so I, I think, Gina, so yes, it will become old business. And I, I think we'll, we'll look at it and we'll have you guys look as well to see what you're, what you're thinking in terms of. It might be that the next round is we sort of categorize, we want it to do this and this and this, right? To see where we are. Did we miss anything? It might be that we can actually get to a place where we have a beginning draft to, to kind of work to or speak to or, or look to. But I think the biggest point is not being in a, you know, we want to keep the work going, but we also don't want to be check the, I hate check the box work. So we don't want to be check the box either, right? We want to optimize this moment. But it, but it will require then that each of us commit to kind of going through that and, and communicating, you know, then what, what stands out, I think, as we go forward. But I also think it's really important, I thought this conversation tonight was important, not only just for the five of us in terms of that, but also our partnership with the leadership team. And this is a perfect moment to, to say to whoever's listening, if you've got some thoughts, now's a great time to, to write in or, or show up and speak to what your thoughts are about this, right? That's part of the reason why we did it this way tonight is to say this is an exercise in inviting comments in as we, as we think through this. So. Any other closing comments to the, to the public comments conversation? Good. All right. Thank you. So with that, we have no correspondence. We have, we had no old business. We did news business and we're to housekeeping. We're at the end of our agenda this evening. And it really is noting the next regular meeting, which is Tuesday, May 23, right here. It is indicating the Strategic and Long Range Planning Committee prior, but I think that really needs to be, isn't that a finance committee meeting? Okay. So with a preceding finance committee meeting. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.